You could all please rise for the pledge allegiance. And I'd like to have a moment of silence for the Capitol Police, who lost their life on Friday, April 2nd. Sooner or later, lunacy is going to stop. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Village of Washingtonville, the organization meeting. Today is Monday, April 5th. A few announcements before we get started. I'd like to welcome Jimmy Cola to the Village Board of Trustees.
Thank you.
I want to announce that trustee Valerie Ladato would be my deputy mayor. We will be sending out comprehensive planning surveys. Do you have any idea what that is?
I'm actually waiting for people to respond if they found errors or not. I would like to send that ideally this week.
Oh, very good. QR coding. Yeah, I like it too, we're good, but you have to, if you're forcing people to put an email, they might not reply.
No, that's an option only.
No, I had to put my name.
Oh, see it now, so I'm glad you told me that.
Yeah.
Okay. We're working on a newsletter that will be mailed to all village residents. Letter will have dates of events that are happening this summer and other important information going on within the Village of Washingtonville. We will no longer hold our meetings over Zoom. The process became too complicated. People could not hear. There were many interruptions. The meetings will be put on the website the following day. I saw today, like many of you, a report from the Mid Hudson News that there were municipalities that could be under fiscal stress. Washingtonville has fallen in the category of non-calender fiscal year and municipalities that did not file their annual fiscal reports. The village has filed the AUD, which stands for Annual Updated Document. We are presently working on the ones we need to submit. Last year, we replaced the order this new gin house for failing to file the AUDs. And we replaced them with O'Connor Davies, an auditing firm out of Westchester County. It came to my attention that villagers do not need to be audited every year. However, AUDs need to be filed. So for years, every five years, villagers need to be audited. So we've been getting audited, or creating an audit every year. And I think the cost was probably about $50,000. That's that. Okay. Village Board work session meeting schedule. Sending the meeting schedule for the Village of Washingtonville, work session meetings, the first Monday of each month at 7:00 p.m. The following dates, July 5th, which falls on a Monday, September 6th, October 11th, January 17th, and February 21st. The work sessions will be the next day, Tuesday. Village Board regular meeting schedule will be the third Tuesday of each month at 7:00 p.m. Zoning Board of Appeals meeting will be the work session for 2021, will be held at Village Hall on the first Thursday of the month. And the regular meeting for the zoning board of appeals will be on the third Thursday of the month.
Can I just interrupt? Yep. Just one question. Did you mention that if there's nothing in the agenda, the meeting doesn't happen?
Good, okay. If there is nothing planned for those meetings, either one, the meeting will not take off, but you will be notified over Facebook, which goes through our website, that there is no meeting. Planning Board Technical Workshop meetings will be held on the second Thursday of the month. And the regular meeting for the Planning Board will be on the fourth Thursday of the month. Court dates. Criminal courts, the second Wednesday at 4:30 p.m. And the fourth Wednesday at 9:00 a.m. Traffic courts, first Thursday at 4:30 p.m. And the fourth Thursday at 6:30 p.m. Payroll period, sending the payroll period Thursday of work week ending Wednesday the following week. Like to adopt two policies. Village department heads are expected to attend village board meetings as requested by the mayor or deputy mayor. Also adopt policy that elected officials, chairpersons of the ZBA, Planning Board, and department heads only can contact our attorneys. All other employees must receive prior approval from the mayor prior to contacting an attorney for the village. Village holidays. Adopting the village holidays as follows. Memorial Day, May 31st. Independence Day, July 5th. Labor Day, September 6th. Veterans, I'm sorry, Columbus Day, October 11th. Veterans Day, Thursday, November 11th. Thanksgiving Day, November 25th. Day after Thanksgiving, November 26th. Christmas Eve, December 24th. That would be for the office staff and courts only. Christmas Day, this year falls on a Saturday, December 25th. Day after Christmas, the office staff and courts will be here. However, Local 17, as per contract, will be off on the day after Christmas. Falls on a Saturday or Sunday, it's Monday. New Year's Eve, office staff and courts only. Martin Luther King Day, January 17th. President's Day, February 21st. And there's a floating holiday for Local 17 only as per their contract, that they must be approved by the DPW superintendent.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
The Local 17, that's the DPW?
That's the DPW.
Just the DPW?
Yes.
And the water also?
Uh, no. The water is 24/7/365.
Did I you?
Department of Public Works. Hours for Department of Public Works, 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. Saturday hours, 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., beginning March, I'm sorry, May 1st, 2021. We found years ago that it was so, it was beneficial to the village residents that the DPW was working six days a week. So there's two people on a rotating schedule that Chris Martino, the superintendent, will be scheduling the workers. Chris Martino, Superintendent of Department of Public Works. William Mann is the working leader. William Pence, Alfred Mann, Mark Glenczek, Carl Burke, Nicholas Muller, Thomas Lezak, John Page, and Larry Vicarian make up the DPW. Village Police Department. Chief of Police is Brian Zakaro. Kenneth Lopez, Francis Urquilliano, Christopher Martin, all sergeants. Jeffrey Anderson, Aaron Goodrato, James Dreary, Benjamin Gersner. Charlie Martin is officer of an also school resource officer. Joseph Mendez, Charles Mitchell. Michael Afici, Edwin Ramos. Thomas Santesuaso, Joshua Trumper, all officers, part-time officers. Vincent Beal, Jose Santiago, James Cronin, Scott Davy, William Wilson, and Marvin Caramano.
Can I interrupt for one second?
Yep.
We forgot Jax.
And Jax.
He's an officer.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. And Jax. His handler is Joseph Mendez. Handler. Please feel free to interrupt and end your time. Okay. Police dispatching. Full-time is Maria Fleming. We have two part-timers, Paul Nieman and Cheryl Weisar. Water and sewer operators, JCO and Biomedical Services. Mayor, part-time elected, is Joseph Bucko. Village trustees, part-time elected, Valerie Ladato, deputy mayor, Richard Kolor, Louisa Sampson, James Cola. Village Hall, Village Clerk Christine Chenkman. Village office staff, Joan Orum, Donna Foley, Linda Homer, Sophia Foley, and Doreen Ema. Building Department is John Terry, code enforcement officer, building inspector slash MS4 enforcement officer. Susan Zalo, fire inspector, assistant building inspector, and code officer. Courts. Court clerk is Tricia Nunes. Justices are Joseph McKay, elected position, Justice Stephen Smith, elected position, and Justice Christopher Turpin, who's elected in the town of Blooming Grove. Never seen him. Although I'd like to have him just come here to do something. Fire Department. His village board members as liaison. Fire Department Analyst, trustee Kolor. Door Park Deputy Mayor Ladato. Department of Public Works, trustee Kolor. Planning Board and Zoning Board, trustee Sampson. Personnel, Mayor Bucko, Deputy Mayor Ladato. Police, Mayor Bucko, Deputy Mayor Ladato. Water and Sewer, Mayor Bucko and trustee Kolor. Building Department, Mayor Bucko. Volunteer Organization Coordinator, Deputy Mayor Ladato, trustee Sampson. Recreation, trustee Sampson. Recording of all those meetings, trustee Kolor. Parks, the whole entire village board. Emergency Management, Village Board. Town Board of Blooming Grove, trustee Kolor is liaison to the board. Village Public Relations, the village board, the office staff, the courts, Department of Public Works, and Police Department. Legal team. Retaining the services of Will Frank of Bluestein Shapiro, Frank and Jerome, Village Board Attorney. Retaining the services of Hawkins, Dallowfield, and Wood, LLP, as a special bond counsel for the village. They come in when we're looking for bonds that we take out. Municipal Financial Services, retaining the services of Munistat as the official financial advisor for the village. Engineers for the village, Delaware Engineering. They need to form the general engineering. Village Insurance Carriers, Marshall and Sterling as the official insurance agency for the village for 2021, 2022. Village Historian, Understandage. Planning Board, Anna Lee Belayja. Chairperson, Selena Rofa, Richard Kolor Jr., Michelle Dillon, Bob Bukowski make up the planning board. And the attorneys, Stephanie Tunic, of Bluestein Shapiro, Frank and Jerome. Zoning Board of Appeals, Warren Divinko is the chairperson. Steve Pressett, Danny Loza, Merrill Drayton, Jim Kiernan make up the Zoning Board of Appeals. And we retain the services of Elizabeth K. Cassidy, escortress as the Zoning Board of Appeals. Attorney, John Petrazini, professional engineer. Engineering review up to middle. Field project reviews, which is reimbursed by the applicant, and engineer for the building department and all commercial applications. So it's different than Delaware Engineering. Official banks. TD Bank is the official depository of the village funds for 2021, and we should also put in there 2022. Official newspaper, Orange County Post, and the Times-Selent Record. Way ahead.
That's pretty good, that was. I'm impressed.
You know, I impress myself every now and then.
You didn't mess up anyone. No, you did great.
I didn't. And the words that I couldn't pronounce, I just went over real quick.
Well, we didn't catch anything.
So this is everyone that has something that is on the village boards, or three boards. Then we do have comprehensive board, which is made up of volunteers. Can't thank them enough for doing what we're doing, but we can't stop it. We have to keep on moving forward with the comprehensive board.
Yes.
Okay.
Could you, I agree with that guy, or that guy?
Sure.
Do you want to mention ARB?
The Architectural Review Board is the Village Board of Trustees. Yes, and I will put that right here.
Because they will be in play.
Yes.
They will be used.
Like I said, anytime you could. Is that a interruption? Why, you can spell this up. Want to see it? You have a Mac also?
No, I don't say anything.
I switched on you.
Sweet.
You know, it's funny because in business, it's PCs.
Yeah.
I don't know why you.
I guess because they know more about.
I think there's more, more things PCs. I'm just making it up. I don't know. So anyone want to add anything, discuss anything? It's a work session right now. I met with Michaelio from Delaware Engineering of the day. I'd like to have permission to send Delaware Engineering a letter or email asking them to start working on Emerson, Emerson Drive and Seacord.
Oh, yes.
Emerson Drive is in very, very bad shape. Last year, I think we were slated to work on that street. They don't want any curbing, so there's no catchbasins. I'm sorry, there's three catchbasins on the corner of Emerson and Seacord. They go into each other. One goes into the creek, the stream that's right there. Also, we need, I spoke to Chris Martino, we need to clean out the outfalls that are running along Emerson and Tolman. So the water could now go across underneath Tolman.
Was it the village that did the bridge or the tunnel on Emerson?
I believe so. I'm not sure.
If they paved that, that needs to be fixed.
Yeah, I don't think they ever paved it. I think they only, yeah, they blinded it.
It seems like there's a huge hump there.
Yes, yeah. I think they put a headlamp. So I'd like permission to have a resumption.
Yeah, why not?
So let's do a resolution.
We do that on the work sessions?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
We just can't go into executive session, Inspector. We go into executive session for personnel issues. We haven't just presented.
I'll second much.
Okay. Trustee Kolor?
Yes.
Trustee Sampson?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Ladato?
Yes.
And trustee Kolor?
Yes.
I'll give another rap there tomorrow. Two minutes tomorrow to start. I've also contacted ATEC Concrete Company. That's the company that.
Did the curving?
Did the curving, did the sidewalks and the burnout. To meet with them, to come up here, to come up with bids. You know, they are, they are under state contract for the center of town around the Christmas tree. You notice they lifted the bottom of the tree, so it looks like a tree now. So that area in there, and we'll probably have to petition the state for the ADA curving. If you don't touch the ADA curving, you don't have to bring it up to the state's code. Soon as you touch it, it has to be what up. Maybe they could work on that, the state. But we have some curving, and please feel free to go through your areas. Well, we could back in the areas. We haven't done that in a couple of years. Looking for sidewalks that need replacing, looking for curving that needs replacement, especially curving from the driveway into the street. Those curves fall into us. We need to have them fixed. The Sunday, we're going to come in and pave this place. I'm looking at paving of Emerson and Seacord, but also Aherne, the largest area, the wider area of Aherne.
From Washington?
From Washington to Tolman. And maybe cul-de-sac. Okay, so we'll have to go out for binding again because the village board gave me permission for $2 million bond, I believe. We went 800,000 or even.
We went less.
We all want that to be saved.
Wow.
What resolution do we need to go out?
Even though we're proof of two.
Yes, I think there's a, there's a sunset.
Okay.
What did you say, they had the pavement for Aherne also from Washington?
Washington to Tolman. Chris Martino sent everyone a picture of the new truck that we got. Now I didn't see you. I'll show you.
Yeah. Chris brought me to.
He has my home, I can get home. But anyway, it does not.
And we also have to work on getting the emails, the, for. I lack the difficulty of it.
I think, I mean, I have no problem contacting the people that need to be contacted. I just didn't want to step on anyone's toes.
At least Peter.
Yeah, well, it's Peter and it's Mark. Because I mean, I took a photo of him to go onto the website or Gmail.
Yes.
Is it okay if I do that?
Absolutely.
Of course, deputy mayor.
Listen, we're not going to say that in public, okay? In fact, my knee is no longer bowed.
I'm just, I'm just afraid to tell them going to the doctor.
You see her eyes go red.
I'm scared for my life.
Anybody have anything that they want to discuss?
You're welcome, Mr. Cola to the board.
I don't have anything to discuss.
I just want to mention the gentleman in appearance for the meeting. They thought it's still open meeting?
Yes, the, yeah, the meeting is still open.
But next meeting?
Yeah. Probably close the public hearing after next meeting. Okay, we also have to work on, as you know, the state of New York has legalized.
Yes.
Okay. Will has, I contacted Will. We're working on a local law to prohibit the retail of it anywhere in the village. So hopefully, we'll have that before next meeting. And I think we still have to go public hearing on that. I can't imagine anyone saying.
Do you know the, you know, the rules with the schools and stuff? Does that apply?
Right.
I, I.
I think it lasted.
It's a very good question, but the information I got, you could go into the schools.
With it.
You'd have less than. It's just crazy.
Because if a school has its own policy, then that.
Well, that would be the school. But I'm saying, you know how like you can't, it's like a drug-free zone.
You have 503.
I think 503, yes.
Yeah.
Now, questions I'm worried on, what is a drug-free zone?
Yeah.
And they look at you, they can.
They may have, yeah.
Okay. You know, so I just want you to be made aware that that ball is already rolling down the street. I'm upset over the whole war. But we certainly not, you know, this village didn't stand for the vape shop when that was business. I don't think it's going to stay like this.
I just want to make sure that Will also doesn't include like smoking lounges and stuff like that, too. You know, like now you can have a cigar lounge. I just want to make sure it's not just retail where it's set.
No, I, okay.
Yeah. I don't want lounges either, you know, anything like that.
Okay.
Where like to bring your own, where you can hang out.
Mm-hmm. Yep. That's crazy. I think the whole people are all pretty.
I feel that.
It's going to get ugly.
It is going to.
And I think all.
It's already stupid.
And it, yeah.
Who was convicted of a crime with it, I think is let out. They're just off the hook, which I've never.
So you know how you have like an open container of beer if you're not supposed to have it in public? Does that apply to the marijuana as well?
Oh, it's not.
So you can walk out openly with?
Now, I haven't read the law. You.
I did.
Is there an age?
21.
To buy or smoke.
To buy.
To buy.
Oh.
Yeah.
So it's like a cigarette. You could be really all smoking cigarettes. You just can't buy them until you're 21.
Yeah, and the other thing is, and I'm not defending it at all, but you do, you need a permit to sell it. You can't just, you know, a lot of people are thinking about, oh, I grow a farm tomorrow, my dog yelled at it. You need a permit. Now, Will, how, you know, could Will is state be enforcing these things? I mean, who knows? They're going to have their own cannabis board, so.
Right.
You know, no offense, they don't force things now, so it's like.
I just want to make sure people aren't going to be like walking down the street.
Always saw every other line with a tax that is incurred by the state for each thing. Oh, that's obvious, that's all about them.
And it's going to go to education.
Yeah, of course.
40% of it.
Yes, just like the lottery.
The lottery. We should, I think we have all been, we have.
40% goes to education and 20% goes to Jordan's Social Services.
40% goes to education?
Yeah, like 20.
It's the other.
Yeah, it's like drugs, isn't that?
Oh, the missing puzzle or the puzzle?
I'm still concerned about that 40%. Does it really happen? I mean, Lotto, think about that. The schools should be lined in gold.
Well, it's, it's, it's the money that they allot for schools. They're getting it from the lottery. They're not taking what they've given the schools from the state and saying, okay, now it's 40% more. They're just giving you the money and saying, this is where it's coming from. It's not coming from, there's no extra money for schools. It's just that's where the money will be found.
So they collect a lottery.
Right.
And they give it out.
As state aid.
Right.
Oh.
So.
Yeah, it's not additional money. Otherwise, every kid would be going home with a computer.
So it's kind of this way in that.
Yeah.
Even if we see that, they're that way too, right?
Well, then, but our taxes get lowered now if we're going to start using the taxes from this. Where does this balance come from?
You're in the taxes.
I, no, I already know. I mean, yeah, I know it's not supposed to count per se, but I'm just saying, if you really analyze it.
When you think right, you're right, like.
You know, after, we just explained it shouldn't. Nothing should go wrong.
It's nuts.
I'm sure there's going to be a lot of people getting permits now.
Yep. Well, the one, the one thing, and I will check on this also. Blooming Grove, even though they, we're in the town of Blooming Grove, because we are self-sufficient, self-governing, I should say, they cannot pass a law for us.
Okay.
So that's a good one.
Okay.
Have we heard any updates about money coming from them?
30 to 90 days, he said. So I don't, I don't think it's been even 30 days, but it maybe has. But it is based on population.
It's money for the Merrill's part of it?
No, for the, the money that.
COVID.
From the.
Federal.
Has given to counties. They didn't go to the states because it could get lost in the state. The counties and then the county gave it to towns. Towns gave it to the villages. My next meeting is, it's October, not October.
March.
Oh, I didn't tell you. April 20th.
It matters, but May 18th is not the same.
Yeah, because you know what it's doing.
Coming in.
You know, but we probably should make that announcement that week.
This is cool.
Yes, absolutely. Has someone wanted to make a motion on the adjourned? I'm going to make a motion. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
We really need to run a poll.